Good afternoon, everybody. Let's stand for the Fudge of Legions. A moment to title.
The Fudge of Legions, to flag the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia stands for a nation of our own, indivisible, with the liberty of its own.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Chairman Westall?
Here.
Commissioner Sodis Little is absent with prior notice. Commissioner Alguire?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
Just a note on Commissioner Sodis Little. She is still struggling with her husband's health issue. She will be watching the recording of this interview and joining us on Tuesday. This time, we have a public comment. Anybody want to make a public comment? Or private comment? Any Commissioner comment? Thank you. Well, the purpose of our meeting today is to conduct the second interview with Mr. Pat Lamb. This is the first second interview we've done, Pat, so you're going to be our guinea pig. We do want the interviews to be less formal than the first round. We're going to start down at the end of the table, and we'll start with Deb Rushton, and she will ask you a question. And based on what you answer, there may be some follow-up. I will not call on people, but I just ask that we ask questions as there's an opening. And if that doesn't work, then we'll adjust that. You all have the questions that we approved in advance. But because it's a second interview, we may want to deviate from these. I would like to start by welcoming Pat Lamb to the table. And Pat, I get to ask you the first question.
Okay.
And then I will just turn it over to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Before -- excuse me, I'm sorry, sorry. But before you begin, I know Chet told me that, but I'm reading some of the questions. The red ones have been asked before.
The reds were the ones that were asked in the first round. However, if you think they're appropriate based on any kind of comments that they make, you may want to ask them again or ask for clarification.
Okay, because I saw one red one, and I couldn't remember it being asked. So that might be okay, getting in the black one. I thought we had asked some of those, but we could ask those again. Thank you.
And based on responses, you do not have to use these, but you could ask others. Pat, you were here a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. And since that time, I'm sure you've learned some things about our organization. What did you read about and learn about and come prepared to share with us?
Yeah, well, first off, thank you, thank you for having me back today. And thank you for the opportunity to meet several people and see some very different faces. I guess the first thing I would say, Ty, is it's a big, big organization and complex, and many, many different departments. And I would say there's going to be some learning that's going to take place, and I'm going to have to learn formally about each department. So I go on and study the county and read comments from you folks and what some of those concerns are, for instance, for the housing. And this county is a big issue. Water quality, the quality of all the beautiful things that we have and cherish within. We don't know how county was a big issue. Taxation and fiscal responsibility is a big issue. And so it's learning all of those areas within the county government. And that is what I'm going to need to do in that first, as you said, three months, six months. Getting out, meeting what the department has, meeting with individuals within each department, listening first and foremost, and learning what is going on, what things are happening that make this county so great and where are the bad areas that can formally look at and improve. And so there's work that I need to do in getting down to complexity to a beach and everyone in the departments that this person in this position would be working with, which I look forward to doing. And I think one of the advantages that I saw walking around the building today is how many different faces that I saw, how many warm smiles and welcomes that I saw from people that I haven't seen in a long time. And so I really feel strongly that I will be able to pick up that knowledge and learn those things that are so important to continue the success of the county.
Thank you, thank you. Well, Commissioner Rushton, would you start us off?
Well, I have a question. It's not on the sheet.
Of course.
What does your vision look like for adding value to our organization? And I know that you probably can't answer that in great detail. However, I would assume that when you come to us for this position, you have your own thoughts. So could you unpack that for me? And just tell us what that kind of looks like.
Sure. I think for me, I look at it almost in two parts. I mean, I think there's the part with the person in this role working with you board and sitting down and learning and working to see what that vision looks like that you have for this county and how that gets implemented with the staff. And it's ongoing and it's taking place. But where are we looking at heading into a year, two years, five years? And what does that look like? How do we get there? What steps do you need to take in order to make that happen? And it happens with communication and working with you board, as well as working with the departments, department heads, and each and every person in each of those departments to strengthen what we have within the county already.
Thank you for that. As you may have observed, it has been one of our strengths to be fiscally conservative financially. How does that fit into your vision for the county?
I think it's hugely important piece to the picture because taxes and taxation is a huge issue. And we need to make sure that tax dollars are being spent and are spent responsibly. I have done that in my role where I'm at with the County Edutech Center. I research how in that position, when I'm spending tax dollars, to make sure that those dollars are being spent responsibly and on things that we would need to spend money on. So if it's something that I'm not familiar with, I'm going to take the time to learn about that. I do believe that conservative spending is extremely important, and it's something that I value, and it's something that I have stuck behind in my role as a director of the Edutech Center.
One of the reasons for that question is, as we look around the environment, the economic environment that appears that we're going, or are in or going into maybe a little bit deeper, how that impacts the county, the operations, how it impacts our citizens. Have you ever dealt with anything like this in your prior experiences where we have to balance what's good for our citizens, what's good for the county operations financially?
I guess I would say in my role, the dollars that are being spent within my program, which is about a $12.5 million budget, I look at it the way I look at it here. Those are tax dollars, those are citizens' dollars. And I think we need, in a role like this, to be very carefully responsible with how those dollars are spent. I haven't done it in a capacity role at county, but I see very similar with the fiscal function of the dollars that I'm responsible for and how those dollars are spent.
Have you ever had to cut somebody's budget because it was lack of funding?
Yes, yes, yeah, different times for different reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And I will try to urge us to rotate after a couple of questions, so just so everybody gets a chance. Commissioner Lautner?
Yes, thank you. Have you had experience working with collective bargaining units?
I have.
Okay, so we have six agreements here at the county. So could you tell us a little bit more about maybe your approach to those or have you been successful with those?
Yeah, it's being open and honest. It's being open and honest from the administrative side and the senior employees. I've sat on our collective bargaining agreement for our parochial union, our teacher assistant meeting. So we have two within the ISD, was a part of the negotiating team with that. It's listening that's going back and forth. It's listening to the needs that are stressed by those teachers in this situation and what dollars we have to spend. And all honesty, coming to an agreement as far as how we can meet, sometimes in the middle, sometimes you can't get to them, depending on the dollars that you have, that you can spend or expend in those areas. But really, it's direct conversation, communication, listening. And when you can't get to that point, being able to explain why you can't get to that negotiation agreement. And if both parties are being open and honest about where they sit and where they stand, I think you can get there. That's been my experience.
Have you been on both sides of the table?
I've not sat on the teacher's side of the table.
Okay.
I was on the administrative side.
So you've been on all administrative side, yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was nice to hear that you just mentioned what you've been working with a budget about 12 mil?
Yes, about around 12.
Okay, so you're right into, we're like 14, 15?
Mm-hmm.
A second here, I didn't get a chance to print my questions off, so I got it. What is your 10-year outlook for Leamah County with rising cost increase, with retirees moving in, decrease with the kid count, with the schools?
Well, that's complex because it goes into all the conversations that we've been having in the county with affordable housing. I think Sheriff Forker, which mentioned it, with the change in the demographics with the county, and more and more folks choosing to live here that didn't grow up here. Those declining enrollment numbers, boy, they've been around since I was at Northport. And it's been a battle since then. And it's finding ways to have a portable housing so young families can move in to the region and the area. And it's trying to figure out what that looks like and how that can take place and happen. Families are having to do with their kids, we know that demographically, and that's been happening for those folks that live within the region. And it's really trying to figure out ways that we can bring more families, young families, into this area, but it's an expensive area to live in. And we know that, and I don't think there's a really easy fix for any of that. And those are issues that we've been talking about for a long time. And from the time I was student teaching in Sutton's Bay, principal at Northport, and going into Traverse City, I think those numbers have steadily declined with enrollments within all of those districts.
Okay, thank you. One more question here. In light of our organization culture, how can you equally represent each department heads or officials while maintaining an independent view?
I think that's so critical and important. I continue to hear all the positive remarks about Chet and he nationally has done that for town about the university. And I will tell you that keeping personal opinions out of some of the discussions that you hear is important and critical. My opinion is important, but I need to look at it from the parties that are being discussed and what is being discussed. And I think I can do that from a very professional standpoint. I've been able to do that where I'm at currently successfully for a long time. But it's working and bringing folks together and listening, having those conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Well, my neighbor practically, yes. It's actually three miles from here, door to door to my house.
To your house?
Yeah. If the crow flies, maybe you could get over the hill faster. So you would be our representative in the community, of course, beyond all of the good things that happened in this building. Do you have any relationship with the Grand Travers Band, a major economic figure in our lives?
I would say the best relationship I have with the band are students that I have worked with. And I have worked with many students, whether that was when I was at Sutton's Bay or Northport. And keeping in contact with those students, who now have children that are in the school system as well. I think if you talk to many folks over there, it's not been formal, but it would be, they would know who I am. And they would know the work that I've done with many other Native American students that I've unfortunately not worked with over the years. And that would be either within the classroom, through an administrative role, whether that be discipline or constantly working coaching on the football field. But I do feel very, very confident with the folks that I've worked with in the county.
That's good. Have you ever been on the schoolship?
I have not, but my daughter just was.
Good, excellent.
And she went on the STEM month for the three-day excursion. So I think it was two nights and three days.
They've had 150,000 students on that program. I mean, it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
You live here. You probably read The Enterprise. You probably know that, unfortunately, I think we've made Chet really eager to leave. After a stellar 10 years, the last year or so has been tough because this staff is going through so many transitions. So it's not going to be a cakewalk. You have elected officials that you are going to have to work with and can't tell what to do. So I have two questions there. One, are you sure you really want to come work here? But no, you live here, so you realize the challenges right now. I have faith in our staff. This is going to work out, but we're in process. So why do you want this job? And how do you see yourself helping with this transition?
So let's talk about the one first. I've been a resident of Leamah County for 26 years. I love what I do right now currently, but I love this county, and this is my home. And I've been fortunate to have three daughters and raise them. I know many, many folks, as seen today, from bases that I hadn't seen in a long time. For the last four or five weeks, this has been hard. I think I put my application in for this position in, I want to say, June. And I'm in a very public position where I'm at. And so lots of questions from staff, not many from students, but lots from staff. And all I can simply say is that I've been there 19 years. I've loved every bit of it. I have a wonderful board that I work with currently there, and wonderful boss. But I've been there for 19 years, and I think it's time for a change. And this is a position that I've worked at over the years. I remember when Chet stepped into it 10 years ago and thought that would be something that I think I would like to end my career with in the county that I resided and lived in. I got to tell you, a number of people have come up to me over the last three weekends across country meetings and just congratulated me and have hoped that I can somehow pull this position off. It means the world to me, and those are the folks that I would like to sit in this chair for and serve. And all honesty, the complexities of the board, I would be telling you, I mean, this has been a change. It might be, it'll be five different faces next month, I think. That is worrisome. And I'd be a liar if I didn't tell you that. But I also know that that's part of public county politics and a county position. My skill set, I believe, my strengths are working with people, talking, listening, and bringing people together, not to agree on everything, but to see both sides. And I've been able to do that, I think, successfully throughout my career. Will it be a challenge? Absolutely it won't be easy, not a chance it won't be any very hard. But it is something that I would take great pride in and would want and aspire to be successful at. I would put it in this. I wouldn't want to fail that, only with that.
Thank you.
Any more?
No, I think that was, I think you answered both questions. Thank you. Thank you for applying too, in what you know.
I get a question now, and you're just an old-school guy. You've never reported directly to a board.
Right.
You've never been the CEO of an organization except your Career Tech Center. But how are you then prepared to come? We initially were looking for somebody that had directly reported to a board. We were looking for somebody with expertise in the business world, maybe, or the finance world, maybe. What is your job at the Career Tech Center and at Northport and Sutton's Bay? What has it done to prepare you for this position?
In the positions that I've been in in leadership, particularly at the Career Tech Center, I am who people, who employees come to regarding current technical education. So if it's an angry parent, it may start with an assistant principal. If it doesn't get handled, it's going to come to you. If there's an appeal situation about discipline, that parent wasn't happy about a reclamation, it's going to start at a lower level, but it's going to come to you. If there's a purchase that needs to take place outside of the budget, and we need to bid that out, and we need to give the bids, and that needs to go to the board because it's over that threshold, it is me that will be asking for that commission from the board and that correspondence. I haven't been the direct person to answer to that board because there's a buffer at the superintendent. However, I am the person that's directly responsible for current technical education within the five county region. So that is one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is I've sat on boards. So I currently am on Networks' North West Board. I'm also part of the executive committee within that board. And I also chair the CAC Board, which is Community Education Advisor Council. And I also sit on the Home Leaders Association Board within Grand Travers County. And I was a member and sat on the board for Child and Family Services. So I'm very familiar with the board's side of that as well and how that lead person needs to work directly with the board and how the person in this role would be directly responsible for it.
A follow-up question on your, how many advisory boards, business advisory, technical skills advisory boards, do you currently work with?
So in my building, each of my programs is required and mandated to have an advisory board. So we have 21 current technical education forums, of which each of those have an advisory board. That advisory board is comprised of minimum seven business and industry partners. And each of those, along with parent representative, special populations representative, local district representative, whole secondary representative. Typically, those advisory boards are anywhere from 15 to 25 folks. So there's 21 of those. When we get together for our big meetings, typically about 370-some business and industry partners that have worked with us.
Thanks, Pat. Deb, we're back to you.
How would you describe your personality? Are you a problem solver? Are you the type of person that likes to motivate or influence people? Is your personality more of one that is paced or steady or stable? Or are you the type of guy that strictly is procedural and follows the rules? Thoughts, Y, as opposed to please?
Not that guy. I'm more of a problem solver for sure and motivator. I know that I do talk to some young football players. I would find I'm a really good motivator in the workplace. But I do feel that I motivate staff and people. And I would tell you that I believe the climate that has been created within the Edutech Center is one of pride. It's one of wanting to be out in front. It's one of wanting to be leading. It's one of leading initiatives that are set forth. So it's getting people to want to buy into the leadership that I bring to the table, which is wanting to be progressive, out in front, and be transitive for all the right reasons. And we've been able to do that there, and I believe I've done it in different roles outside of the Edutech Center and coaching. It's been really positive in that. I would tell you that I believe I'm fun, nervous and all that right now. But I think if you talk to folks, they would tell you that I have a genuine personality. I get along, I laugh, and more than I probably should, folks would make fun of me, so.
So what you're saying is you can be light-hearted at times?
Very much so.
And then at other times, you can be serious and self-proximal?
If me being ex was demanded at the time, for sure.
Thank you. And you don't have to be nervous. We don't bite. Not always.
You spoke earlier today about you had schooling and being a facilities manager. So how, you've been around our campus a little bit. You've read a little bit about it. We are, we do have some other issues. But how do you think that could benefit us here on our campus with our two buildings?
So, let me clarify, I'm not a maintenance, I've got one of the most talented maintenance people in the world at Edutech Center. And the people that I work with there, it's one thing having a teacher, but it's another thing having a teacher that's a certified master of attrition and certified construction in the building. The degree that I received in facilities management along the way, along with recreation, was oversight of full recreation areas and so forth and so on. It would be, or I would tell you, is I'd be able to work with those folks in those roles to troubleshoot and identify problems. We kind of laughed wholeheartedly a little bit with the sheriff coming over, but this is a role to the new building. And all the new buildings that I've been a part of that have been from the street side have similar problems. For whatever reason, we've had problems with roof issues. We've had problems with cracked floors. We've had problems with various things. Why that is, I don't know when you're getting a new build, and it should happen. But those things do happen. But I am familiar with sitting in on those business meetings or construction meetings once a week when those builds are going on and being a part of those meetings with the construction leader of the crew. But by no means am I going to be the person that would be able to fix those things. But I'm familiar with operations, and I'm familiar with working with the maintenance crew and trying to fix or troubleshoot those issues.
Well, that's a very good answer because clearly, we wouldn't expect our administrator to be the one swinging the hammer, et cetera. But hiring the right people at the right time and knowing what you're looking at is...
And just knowing that, you've got to ask a lot of questions. You've got to get a lot of it right and follow it. You've got to really look through the punch list when they're done. You've got to know that those meetings sometimes take place and things get said, and you've got to look at it and make sure that what's said is...
Yes, thank you.
So what you're telling us, your time in Northport, you didn't learn anything from Tim Allen till I'm Tim.
No, but I did from Mr. Rick Ross, what was...
All right, my next question is, this is how I look at it. We're a team here of seven, but the administrator's our coach. And you've said you've been a coach, so you see kids come and go, graduate.
Yep.
And it's fair to say that, you know, the administrator, Chet's been here for 10 years. He's gone through, I think, 14 different commissioners, I think, over that 10 years. And I believe in teamwork. I mean, I look at my administrator for guidance, and I hope that he would look at us. So I believe in the teamwork approach. I don't believe, you know, I really strongly believe, if you read about me, I'm big on bipartisan. We need to work together. And so my next question is, it's a little different. What would you expect from us to make this program move forward?
Well, I appreciate, number one, the analogy you just gave was a portion of the conversation. I hadn't thought about it yet, but that is a really good way to look at, sitting in a position like this in the board. Players coming, all of great, they graduate, you got replaced, you got to find them, you got to build that team again. I guess from my perspective and what I would expect from you folks is open and honest dialogue and communication. I see that when I watch the board meetings with you folks. You speak your minds, and I appreciate that. And I see that it's not always going to get together. And in education, four, three boards oftentimes are said not to be good. I see that here as you folks listening, working with each other, and making important decisions. And I would love to be a part of that, but I want to be working with you folks. And I think it... And I think it is getting, taking that time to getting to know each one of you individuals, but also each one of you that has a school with the understanding that helping my graduate is important. And I have a couple of questions on that. I appreciate that analogy. I haven't looked at it.
All right. Thank you.
So we talk about fiscal conservative conservancy, but I would say fiscal efficiency is very important. And certainly when you're using tax dollars and you see the funding sources that are potentially coming our way, knowing where to find grant applications or funds. You know, I'm five months into this job, so I don't know where they come from either. So how do you learn that and how do you make sure we don't miss any opportunities?
It's going to be a lot of homework.
Yeah.
And you know, there's... I don't know. I... In the school system, there's so many grant committees and part of education is informing and figuring out how it works, those grants. I'm not a grant writer, but I do sit down and sit on the grant committee. And so it is being visible and able to figure out where those dollars come from and how it all works. And it's been involved a lot of communication and time.
Challenge.
But it's so critical and it's so important because we are working on taxpayers' costs. And it needs to have to tend to conservancy, efficiency, but spending dollars wisely and smartly for the taxpayer.
Thanks. Pat, we all know that we have a housing issue in the whole country and also here. And it's critical. You've seen that with teachers. Gee, so we have an excellent planning department. She's really adept and good at what she does with housing. How do you see yourself as supporting... Or would you... I imagine you would.
Yeah.
Supporting that whole thing and then filling in the deficit that you haven't written grants?
Well, I think we all talked about that. We all know that that's been an issue here in Illinois County and at the block. And I don't think there's an easy fix because I think that there had been, taken place already because so many people are behind that issue. So it's trying to sit and listen and work with and figure out. School districts are trying to be a little creative in a sense, and I don't think it's happened up here, but I know districts are looking at, in bigger cities, purchasing houses and getting into the real estate market so that they can have homes at affordable values for their employees. I think it's looking at all ventures and all avenues. I do not know what that answer is, but I absolutely would sit, listen and learn whatever I put on the topic. You folks have been talking about it for a long time. And it's going to be ongoing. And just looking at the enterprise this week, it was most of yours were mentioning that and one of your top three things that you folks were working on, along with the candidates that are running against you folks. It's a big issue and it's a complicated issue.
So you're going to support our planning director?
Absolutely.
[laughing].
Please speak into your microphones.
Okay.
Pat, usually the way we do business is we identify a problem and the administrator comes and does some homework and comes back and makes a recommendation and we talk about it and we reach consensus and take a vote. Sometimes administrators are directed to do something that they may not even think's a good idea, but they have to do it because that's the decision of the board. Can you talk about a time when your boss or your board told you to do something and make it work when you thought it probably wasn't even a good idea?
I'm impressed to think of something.
It may not be a fair question, but...
It's certainly a fair question. I'm just trying to... I don't know that I've been put in a position where I saw a adversity that I was at that much disagreement. Maybe that's a fortune that I've got really good administrators that I've worked for. I can tell you that if it was something that I felt morally opposed to, that I would have that conversation. See what that would mean as well. In that instance, I would probably have that conversation. If I felt strongly that the board was asking me to do something that I struggled with, I certainly would bring that up, tell you folks that that was something that I didn't necessarily CII on or disagree with. But if that was the wishes, we could investigate it and see where it goes. But I would certainly tell you what I thought about that situation.
So honesty and most of... A follow-up. Most of the decisions we make are, most of them are pretty unanimous. Every once in a while, there are four-three or five-two votes. It just may be that the administrator's on the side of the minority wants in terms of his personal view, but can't make that work because the board directed him. So that was the reason I was asking that question. What might you not compromise on?
I wouldn't compromise on one, breaking the law, anything illegal. I just wouldn't compromise on any of that. If there was something more particularly that I struggled with, I would have to make that decision at that time, depending on what it was. I make it clear, though, if I was on the side of the five-two or the four-two or the five-two in the board and it was passed and those were the wishes, I'd support it 100%.
Thank you. Thank you. Back to you, Deb.
Motivation is an important part of supervision. What methods have you used to motivate an employee?
I think value. I think feeling important. I think folks want to know that you value them and that the goal is, you know, most of the works that trust the organization, that's being able to take pride in what folks working for you that want to be there and work for the organization. And it's critical as a leader that people do that. And that's to be directly as that person responsible to make you do that.
So how do you make them feel valued?
Send them a note. Tell them to thank you. Put a birthday card out there. Let them know that they're more than just someone that's showing up to do the job. Knowing about their family, talking about the baseball game or the softball game, talking about their son's graduation or daughter's wedding, whatever. Those things are just so important for the people to know that you care about them. And in that sense, whether it's work-related or not, they feel valued and it's important.
I believe currently our administrator has meetings with leadership, department leadership. So I'm wondering what type of a program that you might implement to recognize people in those departments?
Is there... Do you have any nomination process that takes place amongst staff within the...
I don't think we do. No. Do you think that would be a good idea?
Potentially maybe setting something up where fellow employees can make a nomination of somebody. We have what we call a sale around debt. Our... We went through a strategic planning process where I'm at and a lot of processes called sale. And so people from different departments can make a nomination based off of our values. And we recognize a staff person at each month of board meeting that's been nominated by their fellow employees. And I think that is an important recognition that it's just a certificate and there may be 12 or 13 people that get nominated a month and then one is picked randomly. But it sounds simple. It goes a long way.
Yeah. It could be a good thing. It could be a bad thing. I'm just wondering if you had any ideas how we can better recognize our employee and their efforts?
Well, I mean, I think recognition by whether it's, you know, whether it's a parking space, whether it's a board in the enterprise on a monthly basis that this person is a recognized employee for the amount of time for the rest of the job.
I'm throwing it out there, food for thought, basically. Yeah. Thank you.
I was going to ask you about your background and expertise in the computer, computer technology. There's certain things that administrator has to be able to do to be successful. And federal state public acts that would impact our county, et cetera. So tell us about your computer background.
Familiar with Office product, although we've gotten really away from Office and we're pretty much all Google Docs now, so I'm very familiar with working Google Docs, Google Sheets. I'm familiar and very comfortable in working technology within meetings as far as putting it on screens. But your general software package with most recently Google Docs and Google Sheet package. As far as spreadsheets and databases within the Microsoft Office package, I can get on it and play with those and look at those. But those would be the two software packages.
Certainly, certainly. And presently, our administrator sends us like weekly updates. Obviously, it comes by considering we get it through the email, so it's not a difficult thing to do. But is that something that... Well, it is certainly something you will do if your board asks that of you.
Absolutely.
Have you done anything similar to it? Any ideas on that?
Yeah. I mean, we do updates. I do administrative meetings. I'm in our cabinet meeting every Monday morning, but all the other systems suites within the RISD, and then I have my own. I don't call it cabinet. We just call it administrative TV. I have a staff meeting on a monthly basis. We have Wednesday meetings, which we call a professional learning community meetings. All of those are minutes that are created and those would be updates that we would submit or I would submit to you as a board. If that was something you wanted after a supervisor meeting per se or on a weekly update of what is going on within the county for that week, if that's something that has been ongoing, I would certainly continue with that. Absolutely.
I like that idea, that last part, because presently, there is a staff meeting, I think once a month, but the commissioners are no part of it. It's just been all internal. But we don't have any idea if any concerns are brought up, any compliments are brought up, any NEAs or NAs or...
So we take... I take minutes at my staff meetings, which are once a month, and those are there. So we have them. We take minutes. I think I told you, I host the regional principal meeting group, so those are high school principals from the five county region. So we take minutes at all of those meetings and those minutes are then there and published. They're published for two reasons. They're published so that the principals that can attend can see what they might have missed out on discussion. But they're also there so that our principals can see what we call statues, which is professional government, and we need to have those in case the state visits us. And then they can see what topics were discussed amongst the council. So that's how I keep people informed and if any superintendent wanted those, then it's they look at those as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. To add on to Commissioner Rushton's question there about showing appreciation, all that. I know there's been talk of four-three vote, five-two vote, but I can tell you right now, if you want a seven-zero vote, continue the tradition of getting a cherry pie for our birthdays. So...
Always cherry pie?
If he can get them.
95% of them.
There's the little ones.
So back to my question. I just had to sort of make you relax.
I'll get all that from shopping.
Yeah. I just wanted you to relax a little bit. You're doing a great job. How do you feel about right now? We have... It seems to work. I've only been here one term, but you know, our administrator, every Friday, we get an email of everything that's going on. How do you feel about carrying that?
Oh, that's the tradition. That's worked and it's worked well. We'd love to see that continue if I'm in that role, but we continue, absolutely.
Okay. My next question is, I'm sure you've been reading the last year and a half. It's... We've made two new department heads, the finance and the HR. And I did look at your resume and resumes don't always show everything on there. And I know that you may not have background in finance or HR, but you've been around for a long time. I'm sure you've networked. What can you bring to the table to help in finance or HR? To, you know, we started them. We've got to get them to another level. What do you... As administrator, what can you do for us to get us to that next level?
So from the HR perspective, we have an HR person at the ISD prior to, I want to say, maybe five years ago. There was an HR kind of an office, but I was in a separate building from that. So I was really given the strings and the authority to really do all the hiring in that building. So basically, if we had a position open, applications came in, it was my responsibility to go through those apps and figure out who we were going to choose to interview. I would do that with my team. I would do mine. I would inbox the team. I would look at theirs. We'd come together and talk a lot. We also then handled the scheduling of the interviews, talked to applicants in, asked the questions for the interviews, interviewed the applicants and also did the reference checks and background checks on it. So from a hiring perspective, I've done a lot of that within HR. In a complex as big as mine too, I also have, and when discipline situations come up, evaluations. So I have pretty good background knowledge of that HR side and I think there's a lot of it. The finance side, I work with CFO as well as we have a business operations person. So the CFO runs all the finances. Our business operations person works with that person. Business operations works with me along with a business office staff person within my building. And that's where the budget gets created, the $12 million budget that we talked about. So we'll sit down, and in fact, we're starting our budget meetings going forward right now with each individual instructor. So Lisa and I will sit down with our instructor, probably their teacher assistant, will go through their existing budget, will look at needs that they may have coming about, things that they haven't spent time doing before without being required to provide many more certifications to our students at the state level. So we'll have to rework some of the numbers with the cost for those, because those are not cheap and expensive and revalue those budgets and then see where we're at when we get done with all program budgets. Equipment wishes and capital items and we're looking. I don't do that by myself. I do that from the business side. I'm very comfortable within those conversations with department heads, with teachers, with the programs. So I believe I could offer some insight there, but I'm not responsible for putting together that whole budget, but putting a budget together that is a work in progress. I... That makes sense.
So you're saying that you could be the coach for those two departments?
I think I can be the coach. I'm not going to have all the answers from a audit side or that side of it from the budget side, but I certainly am comfortable working with that.
Okay. Thank you.
So back to being out in the community. What else do you do that's active in the community? So you're seen, villages and townships. It's always very...
Well, I... So I told you a little bit about some of the boards I'm on. So that puts me out and out. I'm out and about with my girls and their activities. So I have one daughter that's in Illinois County Children's Square. And then they're right now all playing for the sports, three different teams, two different schools. So I'm pretty busy with that. I am a single father, so I have my daughters 50/50. And so on those weeks that I have, I am very, very busy between my job early, getting to each and every one of their events and getting down to where they need to go. One driver in the family, hopefully a second one a year from now. So I'm really busy right now with all of that going on in the boards that I sit on in the current position that I'm in. There are many meaningful things that go on with the role that I have with the ISD along with those boards.
And we live that current... And we live that, that current urban model of a 15-minute urban area where you can walk or ride your bike to everything you need in 15 minutes, which is really unusual in Lillaw County?
Well, we can.
Almost.
There, I'm going to be down tomorrow, I'll be down in Towne Zoo area for the cross-country meetings.
Okay.
And then back for homecoming that evening, so if we make, because the race starts at two in the morning, it's a three-and-a-half hour drive. So we're going to figure it out.
Do you say? Yes, thank you. So to piggyback on that, how do you envision keeping the public and the media apprised of what's going on in the county?
Well, I think it's certainly very important to have a really good working relationship with them, open door, trust, having reached out to them, introductions, having conversations, maybe weekly conversations, and setting up a plan. I think it's extremely important that this administrative position works with that role, because it is extremely highly visible, and that's important. I think I told you in the conversation downstairs yesterday, I was putting together a big press conference in my building. There's a lot of work that goes into, into something like that, but I think it's important that there's a mutual relationship with the person working and talking with them, so they're as comfortable with you as you are with them.
Thank you. Don't you go.
It's kind of been asked before, but, but it's important enough to be, ask you again. In our organization, you have an elected prosecutor, an elected sheriff, an elected judge, an elected registrar deeds, an elected clerk. You have almost nothing to do with them except be a part of a team. This Board of Commissioners does have decisions on budget, but they are elected officials with authority that report to the citizens, not you. So how do you work with seven boards of commissioners and a half dozen elected officials that you can't control, you just need to persuade? How do you see that happening?
Well, you know, I guess, I guess the best way I could say, in the role we're in right now that I'm in, we share our students with, the students who aren't coming, we don't have local school districts. And so it's critical in the role I'm in that I have a relationship with their building principals, superintendents, because we don't have students coming around programs. That doesn't work. I don't have any oversight over them, I don't have oversight over transportation, I don't have oversight over the times that they choose to want to come. All of our schools wanted to send their kids in the PM instead of an AM session, so half our schools that I work with send their kids in the morning, and other half send them in the PM. We've got a problem. And so, like, like everything that I said, it's talking, it's communicating, it's working, it's building relationships. And we've been able to do that from the perspective of working with all of our local districts with no oversight. You know, it's kind of like the math English component that I talked about. It's convincing leadership in those districts that I'm going to do a good enough job that their student test scores won't be affected negatively by people that I hire, not people that they hire. Because, so it's, it's just working and building those relationships and trust. And I guess that's the best way I could, I could say that.
Thank you. Back to you, Ed.
You may have answered this kind of in a roundabout way, but maybe you can dig down a little bit in this. Describe how you would involve county staff, department heads, elected officials, and residents in planning and evaluating overall programs for the county. What methods would you use? If you were asked to look at existing programs or to implement new programs, what does that process look like for you?
Are there surveys? I told you, do you do surveys with, with staff, seeking input with...
Not often.
Okay, or with, not within the community either, so, I mean, I'm just curious if there's, if there's avenues right now that are set in place for seeking that input?
Not real. I don't believe so.
Just for perspective, the only time I can think that, that we have done sort of that is when, like, through the planning commission, when we've done our general plan, our county general plan. So I don't know if that helps, Deborah.
And of course, you, I mean, you're meeting, you have many citizens that come in and want to let me know what their feelings are, but I think there's avenues for quite simple surveys, Google Docs, seeking out information. We're, we're looking at one of my, one of our highest, latest programs within my school right now, it's struggling at the moment. And I think in a goal, there's some reasons for that. One being that that program is early in the morning, we don't provide transportation, so students have to drive. It's only offered in the morning. It's offered four hours. Our typical programs are two hours AM, two hours PM, and musting is provided. So I think parents are hesitant to send kids because they're going to be driving down their roads very early in the morning. I think also there's concern with it being only offered in the morning session. But what I had taken into factors, we've had many administrative changes throughout the region with principals and superintendents, and I don't believe they know the whole gist of this program. So if you're at an aptitude in math where you can take calc one as a junior first semester, calc two second semester, calc three in differential equations at the community college to our program all paid for, that's a pretty nice thing that, that doesn't get talked about. And so we're sending out a survey because we're looking at making significant changes to that program, but it dawned on us, it might be that people just aren't aware because of all the new bases. So we developed just a quick survey, a blankie survey people won't do, but just a quick survey to get feedback. I think it would be easy to do within your, within the county's employee staff. Maybe with the community, that's a little tougher deal, but certainly you could seek input if that was something that you wanted to run the decisions for that way. I mean, there's little things that you can do with software and apps on your phone if you're at a staff meeting. It's called mentee, you know, you can ask questions and you can get direct response from your staff right then and there if you're looking for the meeting, just by sitting in a room with a hundred people that have a cellphone, if it was set off. You just ask the question, and then you get a response. So there's little things like that.
Oh, thank you.
There's, one of the topics, topics of discussion right now is, is, I guess I could say, the need for a regional, well, we have a need for a juvenile detention center of some sort. And most of, I would say, the discussion has been leaning towards something regional, maybe the Ten County region. I know TBA ISD is a regional entity. How do you think your experience running, being part of that would help us in that, that quest for a regional, what would your approach be on that?
Well, I mean, yeah, I read some of that in the last week with the questions that were being asked of people. But familiar already with the Ten County region, I feel really confident with. Through the school side of the meeting, I work extremely close with Rexford and Saki, as well as the whole char on ISD, through the current technical education side of it. I mean, that is our region, and our region works together on the Perkins Grant, which is one of the biggest honey magazines for birds I have. So I have many contacts within the education side within the Ten County. And as I said, I also do sit on the network, Southwest Board, which covers those ten counties. So I do have several contacts from county government that sit on that board as well. So I definitely feel very comfortable with being able to have conversations with folks regarding something like that. I'd help them to pick the horn and call, and either they would be able to help or we'd get another name somewhere.
Okay. Thank you.
My next question's going to be on HR. I believe in chain of command, and it's, you know, because I used to work in the government. I feel like if an employee has an issue, they should start with their immediate supervisor or department head. But say they're not getting the answers or, or not, they don't feel comfortable going to that. How do you feel, where do you stand as far as open door policy with employees?
Extremely open door. I mean, I do agree with you, too. I do think ideally first step would be that of being the supervisor, maybe that of being the supervisor's partner. And so maybe that the administrator would be the next person. Then absolutely, I would think that you would open door and handle that situation. I would like it to work itself through and be the immediate supervisor first, but that doesn't always happen that way. But for sure, I would do a policy. And then it may be just that, it may be a conversation on having this issue, and it may be me saying, have you spoken about that issue with? And going through a dialogue to figure out all the steps that happened, taking place or occurred. If they're not going to work with it, it may be a conversation with myself mediating at times, become a supervisor employee, and just figure out what we're having. But absolutely, I think it should start and work its way out. If they're asking.
Okay. My next part of that is down in regards to employees, but what's your policy as far as the public? Would you have an open door as far as them coming in and...
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and again, I think they may start somewhere, too. So if I have a parent situation, oftentimes at school, they want to call the principal, or they want to call the assistant superintendent. They really need to start with the teacher, because they're going to ask me some information about something I don't know. It may be a test form, maybe I'll send them a little bit in class. So the direction would be, I hear you, I'd listen with you, or would you like me to have my teacher reach out to you, have that conversation, you talk about it, and then if we can't get to some formal agreement, there would be an assistant principal max with the teacher, and then eventually it would be to me with the teacher. And I vision it kind of the same way. Having that conversation with someone from the public, and have you spoken with? And maybe they have with them, and then working with those stuffs the same way.
Okay. One more quick question. We have 120-plus employees here. In your career, what's the most you had to oversee?
I think I sit downstairs, it's probably in the realm of 100. I have right now about 77 direct reports, but I'm also on a campus with another facility, it's the Life Skills Center. So that's a center that always serves as for special ed students ages 18 and 26. There's another 150 students down there and probably a hundred staff that do report to an administrator down there, but oftentimes there's carryover in situations that happen in that facility that I have to get involved with. We also have the transportation on our site, so they provide special ed musting and transportation, I don't supervise any of their personnel, but sometimes problems within the musting rooms go over into that room. Direct report, 77 to 80 on the campus that is served at any given time, there's probably 150 to 175 employees, of which I don't have direct reports asked with, but that's the realm that I'm a daily basis at.
So it's fair to say that you can handle the 120-plus here?
I do think I can handle that, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think so, too. So back to our, you were talking about how to do surveys to find out what the public or what the employees close at hand think, and I think that's a great idea. We did do it when we asked the public how we should spend our ARP funds, which was a broad-based group of comments coming in. We were way ahead of other communities because we did it. So that's my limited experience with it, but I really think that's a great idea. More data so that your decisions can have some data-based backing that might make it less conflicting. So, somehow that's a question, but thanks.
Sure.
How about Robert's Rules and Open Meetings Act? Unfortunately, you're going to have to...
Yeah, I watched, checked some of them masterfully. Familiar with it. Utilize it, Chair the C Act and Follow That. I have seen complexities in some of the meetings where I would have to shore up and bone up some of that, but I'm, I'm fairly comfortable with progress force and, and my needs.
Have you watched some of our meetings on YouTube?
Yep, absolutely.
They're riveting.
They are.
They're best with popcorn.
I have, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking at the clock, and we, we need to finish at about 1:30, and we want to give the candidate a, or 2:30, want to give the candidate a chance to ask questions at the end. So probably one more round of questions, and then we'll see if you have some questions. But I have a question in this round, Pat, and I, I've learned a lot from mistakes I've made. And some of them sound like real crises when I made them, but I, I think back and I learn. Talk about a work situation, a job situation where you really messed up, and what'd you learn from it?
You know, I think I shared with you, I mean, I got a student in Northport, taught me more than I ever had for a young administrator, and that was just that everybody walks in someone. He never walked in someone else's shoes. And this was a young man that went off on a teacher because he hadn't completed homework after one Christmas break. This is coming from a person that grew up and looked forward to vacation and Christmas break, because I came from a family where that was time that was spent together, and it was valuable time. This student came from a family where Christmas break, school break, any break at any time was, where's the next meal coming from? What kind of situation am I going to have at home with alcohol or drugs in the house? How am I going to be supported? And so when I had that conversation with the student who said that word to a teacher, sitting here and listening to his point and getting to a point where he knew he was wrong, he knew he shouldn't have said it, he knew it was disrespectful, but what he'd gone through over that timeframe and that break time was something I'd never, ever could imagine, being the age of a student. And so for me, that taught me a lesson in administration that changed the whole thought process, whether it was dealing with students, whether it was dealing with teachers, or whether it was dealing with other administrators. But it is hearing and listening and taking true value and understanding each and every situation was about that. And that was the most important lesson I ever had, because when I was 32 years old, I had no business being a principal, because I didn't know any of that stuff. I always thought the principal was the smartest person in the bill, and in fact, I learned from a very wise person that the principal is the person that values everybody's wisdom in the building, built off of the strengths of those people within the building, and works around those and figures out a situation is, is all about people, is all about relationships. And that's a lesson, and I can tell you that the student's saying, I'm not going to, that, you know, to this day, that is how I talk to teachers. That's the example that I give when, when a teacher has a problem with a parent, and that teacher maybe didn't communicate with the parent and thought that the parent's responsibility should have been to look the greater themselves. That teacher's a parent, too, and how would that teacher as a parent view that situation? This was all taught to me by a 15-year-old student at Northport, my first year being a principal, and I thought I had to have a different way of handling situations, and it changed everything. I would have fallen on my face trying to carry on the way I am.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a real quick question for you. What have you done to further your own professional development in the last fight? development in the last five years?
Well, I sit on, as I said before, but I think more importantly is I take a real active role within current tech ad leadership around the state. So we have what we call our CBIT Council. And I'm extremely active in that. I myself will present, we presented at the state conference last year on competency-based rating in education. And so I've spoken at a national conference as well on current technical education in the rural area. And so I take every opportunity I can to be as active as I can within the CTE, protect ad, leadership area around the state. And I think if you'll ask around.
Would you be comfortable working with our state legislators to, if we have something that we were interested in and we needed? Okay. So you would feel comfortable at that level?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Senator Schmidt was in the building yesterday. And then candidate Moose was in the building yesterday because he wanted tours of the protection. So I gave the tour to him, and then we had the press conference. Senator Schmidt was there. We had Governor Whitmer set up to be in our building. She got snowed out, so we did it online. So any situation along the largest stretch, I go down for a current tech education day. Usually we take a group of students down for that, just so our representatives understand what current tech that is.
So you're comfortable in that arena? Thank you.
Well, that was the question I was going to ask you also. That's the last thing I was curious about. So I have nothing further.
I'll ask one quick one. Besides your daughters and your family, name one or two things that you're really proud of that you've accomplished in your life?
I'm really proud of where I've gotten within my teaching career completely. Extremely proud of my work as a coach in Son's Bay. I took a great ride in that many years ago. But when I started with that program, and Joe Trillo gets the credit for it at that time, that was a program that just got laughed at. We would go to One Lake and we'd look at the beautiful leaves on our closing sideline all day and get beat. And to turn that program around, that was not easy. It was a lot of work to manage. So I'm very proud of those accomplishments. I'm extremely proud that I was able to graduate from college with little debt paid it all off, and move to an area where I had no family, no friends, and I called home. Extremely proud of that. And not ever having to go back home to moms or dads. I graduated, left CMU, moved up here. I told you the story that I can know of all, but somehow being able to make it as a young person up here with no family to say at the time. Extremely proud of that.
Thank you.
I don't know what I did. Nice to talk to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I can defer. I'd like to hear if you have any questions.
It's your turn now. And before we thank you for coming and all of that, what questions might you have of any? And you can direct it to any one of us or all of us?
You know, the biggest challenges that you see for someone that's going to step into this wall, what do you think that everyone's concern should be? And what are your thoughts?
As I mentioned, we're in transition. We have new employees that need training. They're excellent employees, and they need a lot of training. And they, it's, the last year's been difficult with some changes that were made. So we need somebody who's willing to or able to shepherd that process and make sure people are trained well so they can succeed. So we need to know that you're all in on that. That's what I would need to know.
Other counties and other areas of the state that are unsuccessful areas where training would be offered, where maybe visits could take place?
Well, we have people here who've done the job for years. So they're, hopefully that will happen. But so that process just needs to be supported. And I guess I need to know that you would be willing to make sure that happens.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Melinda, you're the most senior commissioner here. How many administrators have you worked with?
Oh, you would put me on the spot. I don't know. Well, all of them. All of them since Dwayne Beard.
So how would you answer Pat's question?
Carefully. I guess I would have to say that the answer's in a lot of what you said today. You know, your approach, you know, your communication, your experience, this is all going to play a part. Yeah.
Any big one thing on the horizon that you envision coming up or you use of being in? Maybe it's a company.
I guess I don't understand the question.
Is there something, if you had to pick one thing or one area that if, maybe you were in the seat, that you think should be time given to, what would that be?
Well, today, I think it's finding the appropriate person to lead the county. And for myself, I'm looking for a person who has leadership capabilities, mentoring capabilities, who's responsible, ethical, to mention a few things. I think primarily, there's so many different focuses that that position needs to take. You, as mentioned, you've got several elected, you've got county board, you've got staff. Here may have staff concerns over there. I don't know how involved you would be with that. But it's big shoes to fill, as we've heard more than once today. So for me, that's the focus for me right now.
I think each area kind of has its own concerns, maybe ever demographic. As you know, the cherry farmers in this area are, they're just being absolutely destroyed with no market. So, you know, they hold a lot of our open space, so to say, our open space, our ridge lines, our vistas, they own that now. So with no market for the cherries, with chemical costs going up, with fuel costs going up, with taxes going up, they're not going to remain orchards for long, unfortunately. So obviously, what's going to come on the tail of that is development. So I think that's something that, while it's going to be a struggle, because you'll begin to hear from people who, you know, they don't want to see any more development up here. And the flip side of that coin is Andrew's department and John Gallagher's department with taxation. So there is a benefit to that. So we, you know, we're in a good position up here because we haven't lost land values. And we probably are likely to. So that's a real challenge for our county. I mean, that's just one slice, just one demographic. But we've got small businesses, you know, they're struggling to stay in the county. We have small businesses that want to come in, but then sometimes the residences are saying, well, we really don't want that small business. But if it's ag-related, we want it. So we have had small businesses that haven't been able to move in. And sometimes their jobs, even if it's perhaps just a few jobs. So there's, the county will always deal with that. And you will hear some of that because it will come to the zoning, or it will come to your townships. And if you have a relationship at all with your supervisors, you will hear some of that.
Thank you.
I guess I would address that, you know, we talk about affordable housing, and it's a big issue, and I don't know how we're ever going to resolve it, but we got to keep working at it. But one thing I think we kind of forget about out here in our county is, you know, there's 22,000 people, and 49% are over 60. The number what's really alarming is the children under five years of age, only 5%. And we're turning into older and older community. And the concern I have is, you know, what do we have, five or six high schools? How are we going to keep them going? I mean, every year I hear about the graduating class. And so, I mean, it's, we got a lot of issues. It's just not affordable housing. But it all connects to housing. But, you know, we also need jobs too.
Thank you.
We've got to make our fiber project completed and our tower project completed. But that's well on the way. Any other questions for us, Pat?
I think that's it. I think that's it. I just thank you all for the time. Fun and challenging at the same time. It's been great having you all of you and all of the one I do well, as well too, on a basis today. I just would like to leave you with the fact that this is home for me, home for my girls. I hope that my girls leave the hooler way back and raise their families in this home, because I love it. And I would do everything I have to be successful in this position and make you folks proud of the selection that you select me. And I wish you luck in that process, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
We have two more interviews scheduled on Tuesday, and then this issue is on our agenda Tuesday night.
Don't forget about the Tuesday. It's a long time between now and then.
Wait, what's your name?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
That's kind of a point spread against me on that, if I'm in here on purpose. Don't forget about it.
Have a good weekend.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate all your time. It may be that we have public comment from Pat's former supervisor. So you better skip the public comment, Pat.
I'm glad.
Any public comment?
Not unless Pat says so. You're my boss, and you go ahead and do what you want to do, boss. I'm Rick Cross, I'm the township supervisor.
Excuse me. Could you come speak up to my phone? This is big before you.
I just think.
I'm Rick Cross, I'm currently living on a township supervisor. But I was the superintendent of the Northport School, and we met Pat 22 years ago when he was a teacher there. We had a lot of issues, and discipline was the biggest one. My kid's completely out of control. The principal that was there when I came was under contract when he left. After about three weeks, I asked Pat, are we not even going to come out of the classroom and become the principal? Two important things there. One, every single teacher thanked me for doing that. So he had the respect of his peers. And the students, the students loved him. But more than that, they respected him. And we had an orderly school within about three months. And I kept in touch. I admire his devotion to his family and the job. And I, you couldn't have been a better person, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any commissioner comment? Yes? I did learn today before the meeting that, about you, Mr. Russell, that the reason you were so successful up at Northport was because this man out here paved the way for you. No question about it. Before, my comment is, this was our first of the interviews. And so if you have thoughts on the interview process, please get those to me. I think this worked well today, but we will plan on the same format unless I hear differently next week. Thank you. Any motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
We are adjourned.
We're on schedule.